So why don't we call to order at 4:03, a meeting on August 13th, 2020 of the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees Subcommittee. We do a roll call typically. Rainey?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Booth here, and we have Dorothy Presser from MASC, and we have Lori. She knows the meeting's on. She and I worked together just a short while ago, so she'll hop in when she can, I'm sure. So by way of introductions, Cynthia Rainey, Concord and Concord Carlisle, and Sarah Wilson, Concord Carlisle, as well as the Carlisle School Committee, and Dorothy, our current vice chair of the Regional School District.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Dorothy. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So are you running around the district by Zoom at a furious pace, Dorothy, putting together policies?
Well, putting together policies, answering lots of questions around reopening, as you might imagine.
Sure. Yes. I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I know we have both a review of the policies that saw first reading on Tuesday. Number one. Number two, a review of others that are potentially of import right now. And then third, to pick up where we left off on civil rights, hate crimes, gender identity.
Corey, we have minutes. I believe we got minutes. Is that correct?
Thank you. Yeah, the minutes indeed were turned around so very quickly. Yeah, thank you, Cynthia. So with that, these are the minutes that Erin put together. I thought they were a pretty faithful recording. I didn't see any problems. I don't even see a need to go back and look at them again. I was so confident. Are others of a like mind? Is there a motion to approve? Okay.
I moved.
So a second. Cynthia, if you can unmute. Sorry, Sarah, if you can unmute.
Second.
Second, and discussion, those in favor. Rainey?
Aye.
And Wilson?
Aye.
And Booth? Aye. So the minutes of last week are approved. Thank you very much. I believe we should start with the policies that are going to return to the school committee next Tuesday for approval. These are the four policies that Dorothy and her team were good enough to get our way. We made only the slightest changes in them. To be accurate here, I'm going to be referring to the copies that were attached to the agenda last week. And we can screen share at any point we want. The first one was the EBC supplemental, creation of a general parentheses interim, close parentheses policy on COVID-related issues. If I'm correct, don't let me get ahead of us here, this would be satisfactory as is, except for the titling. What we would do in this case, I think, is retitle it not "Policy Issues for the Pandemic", drop that out of the title, drop out "Creation of" and simply reference it as, quote, "General interim policy on COVID-related issues, EBC supplemental." Does that sound sensible? And then this, to our thinking, Dorothy, this is really designed to be a, your words now, general, and it certainly is a general and kind of all-encompassing heads-up that the superintendent and the school committee are going to use their respective authorities to do what's necessary in some knowns and unknowns relating to a health crisis.
Right, right. That, you know, that there are certain policies that you may want to temporarily amend, given the health crisis.
So we made no internal changes on this one. Does this require further discussion on our part?
I don't think so.
So hearing none, the second one that's going to come by way of the school committees next week for approval is face coverings. We made one change, and that change was in reference to the grade level for which this would pertain, and we dropped all reference to that, the implication being it's all students. Other than that, we left it unchanged.
Lori, do you think there'd be any more? I know you don't know, but given the latest discussions about some face coverings are not as effective as others, do you think there might be more specific guidance coming? But this is probably just good enough for policy, right?
I think this is good enough for policy. I definitely have ongoing feedback this week to not allow gators after the Duke study came out, so.
Yeah.
I don't know that it needs to be here.
No, I don't.
Yeah.
Although, to that point, Lori, if we called it face masks, I know we're down in the weeds, as we always are. A face covering that covers the mouth and nose. I think we can leave it alone. We've got lots of regulatory authority, which we're going to get into in terms of how Lori interprets this.
Right.
Okay.
I think this provides you the framework to...
Yeah, I was thrilled to see this policy, because I, we're going to need the backup potentially, so it's really important.
Yeah. I think at first, when committees started asking about, you know, a face policy, our first reaction was, well, you have all the guidance. But then we sort of realized what people wanted was the policy backing to say, no, you can't just decide not to wear one.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And later in the meeting, you'll hear me refer to another policy that gives Lori additional support in removing a child who is, I forget the exact one, where is it? Under communicable diseases, inappropriate behavior that increases likelihood of transmission, quote unquote, is already in our policies as additional authority to remove a child from a classroom environment. But we'll get to those. The next one was remote learning, and that one was unchanged and seems to simply reiterate in a different framing a lot of what we already know about digital learning. I don't think this does anything of substance in terms of what you would do or not do. It simply puts a headline around it for the community. Would you agree, Lori?
Yeah, you know, I was reflecting, it actually formalizes it, because it's not a mode we've ever had, so it actually gives it a, gives it a frame and a structure as this is a valid thing schools do. I mean, usually, the, if you're not part of our school buildings, you're not part of the school, and that's got a lot of law attached to it and a lot of restrictions on us as public schools. And now, all of a sudden, there's this remote learning thing that broke the walls down differently, so it's an important policy.
The final, then, one was the remote learning addendum, which we thought was a kind of guidance advisory, and so we made the change, Dorothy, of making certain that it was prefaced with, quote, "during the period designated as an emergency by the governor."
And it was, yeah, it was really more intended to be things to think about as you're implementing a remote learning plan, more than having any, you know, that's why it's a dash E, an exhibit.
Yeah.
It's not really meant to really rise necessarily to the level of policy that the IHBH would rise to.
Right. Although, by adopting it, we're calling it a policy, but it's a policy that, close up, is in fact an exhibit. So those are going to return unchanged, if I'm correct, to the school committee next week. They gave it a silent acquiescence when we met earlier this week.
Quick question before we enter the next item. What are the mechanics to updating our school committee policy manual?
By mechanics, I'm not sure what you mean, so I'll go through what I think is mechanics and process. Mechanics is to have this committee make recommendation to the larger committee that takes the form of a first reading in a public meeting, and then it returns for adoption at a subsequent meeting, although there is a policy in our 300-some policies that say in a situation we consider an emergency, we can skip the first step.
Sure.
And in terms of, I think that actually is policy and mechanic, sorry, process and mechanics right there.
So how does the physical manual, or I should say electronic manual, get updated?
Erin does all that, so she works with MASC and sends them the new policy to upload. We, of course, have a hard copy in our office, too, that she updates.
That's why I just, I didn't know that particular, if it was a school committee sort of responsibility, or the roster's a little bit incorrect. It's...
Say again, the last piece, Cynthia?
The roster of our committee members is a little out of date as well.
Okay, and that's probably an intro section?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just flag that.
And that's not a policy matter, that's a document management matter, so I think Lori simply sends that information along.
Yeah, we update it when you give us the updates, so.
And this, all of these, for all the districts, live on your server somewhere? Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to go into a quick report out on our respective pieces of homework. We singled out some that we thought might be relevant now. This, in addition to the, to the list that came out in the MASC newsletter of July 10, what policies need to be reviewed, and we've got that list, which some of us have gone over as well. Before we look at ones we singled out and ones that you singled out for review to do a, just a quick once-over, to see which ones require drilling down, are there any other significant recommendations that have come out of MASC that we have not seen communicated our way yet? Is something happening this week that we need to know?
Well, not this week. The only one, the only other policy that's come out sort of in the midst of all the policies about pandemic would be the policy on harassment and sexual harassment.
Interesting, okay. All right, so would you advise us to look at that today? Is it a...
I would. There's a deadline of having the, your policies updated, which is supposedly August 14th. However, the department didn't really finalize any guidance to give you...
Yeah, I can't say I'm thinking that's going to hold in this crazy...
So I'm confused. I'm confused. DESI effectively told school committees to make sure that they've reviewed and updated this particular policy?
Well, actually, it was a federal, it was, it was the federal government who said it should be reviewed. It's more complicated than that.
It is.
Because, because our attorney general is actually suing the Department of Education about the mandate and the policy.
So we have not been remiss in not putting this front and center?
No, you have not. You didn't have, I mean, we were waiting for some guidance on what exactly needed to be in the policy and the wording, and so we actually didn't complete, you know, have the information we needed to complete a model policy until last week.
Okay.
Perfect.
So then what immediate action this meeting this week would be appropriate for us, Dorothy?
I, you know, I think you should start to take a look at the policy and not drag your feet too much on getting it updated. If you have any sort of coordinated review coming up, I'm sure that that will be something that they'll be looking at.
Okay. And by way of coordinated review, I'll tell you what we're doing, and that is, number one, trying to simply go through every single policy, see if they look okay, see if they have a date of adoption, if they have a date of adoption, is it recorded? If not, can we record it? If we can't find it, do we want to reaffirm it so we can get a date on it, so that there's a record of our housekeeping? And then, secondly, and this seems to be what happens, we preempt that process when specific ones, for some reason or another, require our attention.
Yeah, I'm talking about the coordinated program review, that the department comes every six years or every three years with an interim one to look at your civil rights and your special education policies.
Got it, okay. So do you have something you're going to direct our attention to today?
Yeah, I actually just grabbed it. I emailed it to you, and I can screen share. I grabbed it off the MASC piece.
So do you think we should spend our time there now, or digest what you sent us, Lori, and put it on?
Oh, I emailed you the link, but I...
So I'm, okay, Molly's joined us.
I would say, I would say I wouldn't spend a lot of time really digging into it today. I would digest it and put it on your agenda for next time.
Yeah, it's, I know the law, and yes, we've been getting notice of the law getting in place, but we're, I think, between the pandemic and the governmental bickering, it hasn't hit anybody's priority list, so.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so agreed that we will give it a subcommittee first review on the next agenda?
Yeah, that makes good sense.
Good, okay.
So this is Title IX, changes?
Yes.
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 Pretty controversial ones.
Yes, I know a little bit about it, yes, yes. More so on the college campuses, but...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So with that, I mean, I'm going to suggest that we do a review of what homework got done by way of a look at existing policies to determine whether any require flagging right now. And we can do this in any order we want.
Or just refresh my memory.
So we had a list of...
Where, with the, so we have our own list, and then we have the MASC list?
Correct. And I was thinking we'd do a quick check-in. Did you flag anything when you looked at the handful that you took on? For example, I mean, I'd be happy to quickly go through mine.
Why don't you do that? I mean, I have them printed out, and I guess I just would have questions about...
My homework included a look at ADF wellness, because the word isolation was in there, and there's going to be some isolation if we have illness, and the isolation might take a different form with a highly transmissible disease, but I don't think it requires additional attention, even though there's a reference there in wellness to acting without discrimination or isolation. I think the context is very different than what we're talking about with a temporary isolation for a student leaving, leaving the building for health reasons. The second one I was looking at was CHA developmental, development of regulations, and this is one that simply bestows a considerable amount of authority on the superintendent to get that job done, to put regulations in effect that are consistent with policy. The next one I looked at in regard to remote learning and face masks and so on, was student dress code, which is left entirely to parent and student, although schools can recommend what you do and don't do. But what I thought was useful here was that there can, this is referenced in the student dress code, there can be requirements that relate to health and safety. So although it's up to the parent, that changes when it's health and safety. The next one was JL, I looked at student welfare, didn't seem to create any problems about what we might anticipate doing or students doing. JCL refers to health screening and, quote, "communicable disease prevention." I think it's very compatible with anything that we might foresee with testing and entry requirements, if we put in those testing entry requirements. The last one I looked at was JLCC, communicable diseases, and it's very clear that the school district has a right to exclude, quote unquote. And that was the one that also had the, one that was, I thought, prescient, that exclusion could be triggered by, quote, "inappropriate behavior that increases the likelihood of transmission," unquote. So all of these suggest that we're in good, good shape, and none of these require any temporary revision or suspension of a policy. So those are the ones I looked at. Anybody else look over any that either passed muster or demand some kind of attention? Going to create issues that were unintended at the time they were adopted?
So...
Sarah?
Go ahead, Cynthia.
Nope, you go ahead.
Okay, no, I mean, I was just going to say that most of mine looked good, but I did have a couple of questions, so if we just want to run through them quickly like you did with yours.
Sure.
Yep, so I started, I had EB safety program, which says there's, the committee will comply with the safety requirements established by governmental authorities, et cetera, and it will be the responsibility of the superintendent to see that appropriate staff members are kept informed of current state and local requirements relating to fire prevention, civil defense, sanitation, public health, and occupational safety. So I felt that was broad enough to encompass everything right here.
Good.
For first aid, I had a question, because it says that, let's see, I mean, I think a lot of it is fine. It says temporary, you know, first aid's temporary care given in a case of an accident or sudden illness that enables a child to be taken safely to home, and it does not include diagnosis or treatment. Any care beyond first aid will not be given. So, and then each school procedures will be developed for the proper handling of an injury or sudden illness of a child staff member. I think we're setting up a quarantine area, right, for kids? And it just says, I don't know, I don't know if we want to address anything about, because there's nothing about isolating a child, and, you know, there's the, there's a nurse who's responsible for administering first aid, and then it says, when the nature of an illness or an injury appears in any way serious, diligent efforts may, I don't know, contact the family immediately. I just stuck a note in this whole general thing. There's, you know, there's a thing about making arrangements for immediate hospitalization, but I don't know, I don't know if we have to address anything about what happens with a child who, who may present, right? Because the, because the nurse isn't going to diagnose, and I don't know, I don't know if there's anything that we have to deal with on that.
My, my sense is we're going to be okay, but maybe, I'm thinking out loud here, Lori, we get more definitive understandings with the public health people, and then come back to this and see if whatever public health generates by way of protocols is...
Right, I'm actually bringing you, I've met with them and bringing you Tuesday night, the protocols that I worked on with them, combination of DESI, CDC, DPH guideline. So yes, I'm bringing that to you Tuesday night.
So they're also meeting at the same time as FINCOM on Tuesday night.
Oh, are they meeting before the hearing?
No, the, the health department is meeting at seven.
Oh, yes, I did know that, actually, because they asked me to go, and I couldn't actually be in three places at once. Yeah, so at five, or 5:30, I'm going to bring you the, what they worked on with, with me.
One of us should be there, so we'll figure it out.
So Lori, in your spare time, look at that next to EBB, or spin it off to one of us to say, put the two side by side.
You know what, I was going to share those with all the committee before Tuesday. I'll just do it tonight, so you can all see them.
You'll send them out to us?
Yeah.
All right, so Sarah, can I ask you to, go back to, go back to EBB and look at it in light of what Lori shares with us as the most current Board of Health DPH protocol?
Okay.
See if there's any potential conflict.
Okay.
And Sarah, were you also assigned emergency plans?
Yep, I'm still going.
Good.
So I have, I have emergency closings right now that also gave a lot of latitude about other emergencies that threaten the health or safety of students and personnel, so that seemed, you know, and if conditions affect only a single school, that school will be closed, so that leaves options for, you know, outbreaks in one place or another. The only thing, so here, it was this whole thing about the superintendent will consider many factors, including the following principal ones relating to the fundamental concern. I mean, it does say that the superintendent will consider many factors, and I think based on that, there's the third bullet on that that says actual occurrence or imminent possibility of any emergency condition that would make the operation of schools difficult or dangerous. So I think we could, I don't think we have to change anything here for, to deal with pandemic, right?
Yeah.
And it says the superintendent will weigh these factors to take action to close the schools only after consultation with public works of public safety authorities and with school officials from neighboring towns. But here was my question, the last line says, "When schools are closed for emergency reasons, staff members will comply with school committee policy in reporting for work." And I tried to figure out what the policy was for reporting to work, and, you know, and, because there's not a cross-reference here, there's just emergency plans, and I looked through the personnel part and couldn't find exactly what corresponds to that, and so do we have a policy for reporting to work in these conditions?
They, they usually don't, so that's definitely something to talk about, yeah.
Okay. Do you have any, do you have any procedures, though, in like a staff handbook?
I'd have to pull it up. If we did, it wouldn't be easily publicly accessible to reference there, but...
I could not, I mean, I couldn't find anything, and I'm, not that I know exactly where I was looking, but in personnel and in searching for, for keywords and stuff, I couldn't find anything that would give guidance on this.
All right.
So that was what I flagged.
So a, a way forward is to start to dig down on this right now, or do some work offline. But what we're hearing so far is that per-school committee policy isn't going to work if there's A, not a policy, and B, not even a handbook or established practice that's accessible to people and known to people, and even if there was, on inspection, we might say Lori needs more flexibility right now. I'm going to propose, I'm just thinking out loud here, that we assign this to... Assign this to. I don't know, Sarah and Laura to. Dive into it.
Okay.
I don't know, how do you want to handle it?
I feel like it just needs to be revised, I don't know that we're going to come up with another place that that exists. I pulled the handbook, but that it's silent on it too, so. It may be just an outdated reference that at some point they were expected to come in.
So why don't we, why don't we flag this one for a change and. If you're content with the status quo vis a vis your latitude Lori. Then we've got to get that per school committee policy out of there.
Yeah, because actually in the pandemic, I think I'll need more latitude than ever, because there may be times, I actually do. Bring them in and the kids don't come, like I, you can see the mixing and matching might be more likely than a snowstorm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can sort of tell that this was written more for physical type of emergencies, weather emergencies. Water main breaks, things like that. Where and, you know, even in a snowstorm, I think a lot of times that whether it's in policy or whether it's. Just the expectation that teachers aren't going to come in, but you know, there's certain administrative staff that want, if they can come in safely, they're expected to come in at some point or. You know, custodial workers. Yeah.
So Sarah, what was the not the letter name on that one?
That one was E B C D.
I was gonna just double check the M A S C policy manual too.
Yeah, I got it right up here too. That's probably the wording in there. M A S C policy.
That is the wording in the policy, yes. M A S C version.
Well, shall we call this everybody's homework and prepare for it on the on the agenda for the next meeting?
We can see if M A S C has a policy. For. Reporting to work. That's, yeah.
Yeah.
I can look really quick, I. I I my guess is that the assumption is that it would reside somewhere in a staff handbook.
Which I can take that, we have a section on closures, but not a clear statement about whether you come or not. So I, we can take that back and add it to the handbook too.
Be good.
Yeah. Yep.
Expect me to drive in to school in a snowstorm versus.
There are a couple of contracts that have things in there, the custodial one definitely does.
Right.
And we would consider things like contracts or staff handbooks to have the force of policy, so.
Okay, so we've got that one to return to, thank you.
Yep, then for E B C, emergency plans. There's a line that says the superintendent will develop and maintain plans that meet the requirements of state law for preparedness in case of fire, civil emergencies and natural disasters. Do. You know, like, there's no mention of health crisis, but I don't know if if this counts as a civil emergency or a natural disaster and. And I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, and and does she, does she have that authority abundantly elsewhere so that?
Right.
It doesn't require more muscle here.
So that was the question on that one and.
So read it again quickly, Sarah, if you would.
Started the other line, yeah. The superintendent will develop and maintain plans that meet the requirements of state law for preparedness. In case of fire, civil emergencies and natural disasters.
Probably fits under civil emergency where the governor's declared a state of emergency, it's not. Super specific, but it does seem like it would fit under that.
That's where I was going, because regardless of our policy handbook, you 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 were instructed to do it by somebody who's got sufficient authority and.
Yeah. Or it could be considered a natural disaster.
Three days after I closed, I got instructed.
Yeah, well, they were trying to catch up with you, yeah.
Yeah, they were catching up with us.
And and then I had a question during this time of of pandemic. Is there, is that requirement for conducting fire drills and emergency response drills? At least once a year enforced?
Yeah, we've spoken to the fire department, the law pertains, it's actually four times a year for fire drills. And what they're going to do with us is just understand the, normally they're timing us, so we get out as quick as we can. They're going to know that's going to be very different, because we have to. Structure it so differently, but we are absolutely running fire drills, yeah. They want muscle memory that. Well, it's interesting, we're finding as we get closer to school opening, all certain things are starting to trip over each other, the fire drill is actually not one of the most predominant, but. There's other places where, you know, all of a sudden we're storing chairs today and those are in the wrong place, because the fire department comes in and. I won't even get into the regulation about hand sanitizer, I've got three different directions, there's issues with hand sanitizer in the school. And all you want to do is go, really? You know, we can't open without hand sanitizer everywhere, and now we're complying with the. Medical place, we need a doctor's order, the storage of it, because it's flammable. All starts just, you know, accumulating.
Don't put it next to the fish tank.
Yeah, I know Cynthia. Okay, oh wait, no, that's a different emergency. Let's, let's not put too many in one, one situation.
Okay, so everybody's good with that, that's good, then I had E E A E C. Also known as J I C C, which is the student conduct on the buses. This is the authority for enforcing school committee requirements of student conduct on buses will rest with the principals. And my only flag on that is. You know, we have to establish the requirements of student conduct on the buses. Right? And then. The last one, there's E E A E C dash R, also known as J I C C dash R, which is student conduct on buses. And so there's the required conduct aboard the buses that, you know, there's a list of specific rules and regulations. And there's no, there's no latitude in interpreting other things in this, right? It's very explicit, one, two, three, four, five, it actually says five twice and then. Six, so one thing we have to clean up is that there are two fives in this bullet list. And then the other one is that there's no, you know, the rules are riders must remain in seats or in place when the bus is in motion, whistling and shouting are not permitted, profanity, obscene language, smoking. All of that stuff, and this is what parents are supposed to be informed of these regulations beginning of each school year and asked to retor turn sign forms indicating regulations have been received and read. But there's no mention of face coverings, obviously. On the existing required conduct aboard the bus.
So would that be a face covering addition or a more general? And and other requirements? As necessary, some language like that.
Yeah, I think maybe we need to put something and say at the beginning of this that just say. You know, based on, I don't know, in 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 certain times or in response to to certain crises or whatever, like. The the required, the required conduct may change, I don't, I don't know.
Can I, can I suggest that maybe what you need to do is add a reference to your face covering policy? Because the face covering policy says on school buses.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah. So the trick is that whenever the, when we're finally over the pandemic, we. Things, yeah.
We don't have to unwind everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say that the face covering policy is sufficient. And if a parent points to this and says it's not in there, oh, we just push them back to the face covering policy. I don't think we're going to have a problem. It isn't sort of like, well, the bus seems like a safer place, actually.
The people who are going to create problems for Lori have already decided to do so. It's not going to happen, it's not going to happen because of this policy handbook.
All right, okay, and that's all I had.
All right, good. Thank you, Sarah. Cynthia, were you able to look at the ADA one?
So A C E?
Yes.
Yes, so I'm, I'm going to throw this to Dorothy and ask if we should touch this in like, in other words. Is there any possibility that we can could, or anybody would consider? A COVID positive test as a disability or handicap?
I, I just let me look at it real quick. I would say no.
Okay.
It's because. I mean, and if anyone has COVID and you're, you know, thinking about their education, you're going to be looking at things like homeschooling or remote learning or. But you wouldn't put them on, this is basically sort of 504. Wouldn't necessarily put them on a 504 plan unless there was some other health issue that needed addressing that grew out of their having the COVID. Virus, the coronavirus, so I would say no.
Okay.
So I was just thinking, this is just not, this is such an important policy, I don't think I would touch it. But if others have a different opinion, then.
Yeah, and I've done a lot of work on ADA stuff in terms of people at risk for COVID, that's where it's coming up the most and what accommodations we need to provide, whether it's staff or students. I think. I I wouldn't touch it either, because it's mostly language that's coming right from those laws. And now they're just being applied to the current situation.
Since we're. I would jump to the tech, these are closer to what we're discussing now, so homeschooling, homebound instruction, Lori, and school year. School year, obviously, that we know there's changes, I don't know that it would behoove us to go change this this year. Unless you want to.
No, I wouldn't, I think the commissioner's order. Over sits on top of it clearly and could provide that.
Because they go. That we don't have this next year. Look at that. Then I'm going to ask you Lori about homeschooling and home.
So which policy is it, just I have it right in front of me?
I I H B F I H B G.
Correct.
So homebound is when, is actually. Gotten, it's, it's when we need to provide educational services, because the student's not able to come to the actual school building. So obviously, that's taken on a remote learning approach rather than. Often it was a tutor kind of approach in the past, and now it's a remote learning approach, so what. In this particular moment in time, clearly they don't need medical documentation, we are legally responsible to provide. If they choose even, they don't even need a medical situation if the family just pops out of coming in. So I don't know, Dorothy, would you change this for the moment in time we're in?
Yeah, no, no, I wouldn't. I would say in some ways it's a temporarily irrelevant, temporarily irrelevant policy, because. But I wouldn't touch it, I'd leave it, I would just leave it.
Yep. Okay, homeschooling, however, is very relevant, because if the family. Wants to just go do their own curriculum and their own instruction and not use our resources and materials. We are saying, no, that's homeschooling, you need to go through this process, you actually unenroll from the district. Completely separate versus remote learning or homebound where you're working under our legal umbrellas.
Sure.
So that actually has been a policy we're using a lot, right, not a lot, but a handful of times right now, as families try to navigate the choices they have.
And you find it to be solid and sufficient and not requiring any update?
No.
Okay. Um, so then on to the the I K Ns. The one thing that jumped out at me was I J and, hold on. I J N D V dash R, electronic communication. And it's not necessarily just COVID that makes it out of date in my mind, we constantly refer to the district network. Like everybody's sitting on our own network and not on the cloud. So I was going to ask if Peter Kelly might like to go through this. And updated as appropriate for resources. We need language about resources that are. It's, you know, Google Cloud, how we refer to that in a generic way, we don't have to call out every different platform. But very rarely are we on a school net, I mean. You could say they're on the school network, but not using. Sitting servers at the school for the most part. And then, you know, I I assume that we're going to move to sort of all electronic signatures to get people to do, get these. These acceptable use policies, so. Probably have the same wording, pretty generic, so I don't think that's a problem. And then. Off the top of your head, I'm going to do a little more thinking about it, as far as electric. Again, about, since we're using a lot of third party providers now, I just think we need to be very. Clear about personal identifiable information. And that we have an agreement with each of the providers where they do gather. You know, kids do sign in, often it's a pass through from Google, you know, with credentials and such, so I don't know if they're grabbing the student information. But where we're actually. Doing evaluations of students, et cetera, where they are definitely getting that information and storing it, I think we need to be sure that. We have. Clear. Privacy policy with that provider.
Before, before Peter would weigh in on this. Dorothy, has M A S C done or other districts done some tightening around this, to your knowledge?
Oh, it's actually, you know, I know other districts have discussed it. And we have not done anything around it, it's an interesting question, I'll have to go back and bring it up.
So the way forward on this then is. Dorothy knows we're paying attention to it and we're going to look at. How other districts might have attended to it, Peter's going to look at the the I J N sub policies there. Is that, is that the way forward on this one for today?
I think so, I mean, I don't think that any of that policy is a problem for COVID or immediate. Bad issue, but it just is pretty out of date. Where we have this notion, everybody's sitting on the district. Yeah.
Right, and we, we, we are much more potentially insecure.
Yes.
Or exposed.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's a little about. Yeah, exactly, so.
Okay. Anything else from our, that homework that we took on for ourselves? What I'm going to do now is just quickly read off the list that M A S C provided. And Lori in particular, stop us if you. Think these. Require a closer look right now. General district goals affected by the pandemic, student assignment, school calendar, class size, attendance, attendance policies. Chronic absence policies, might be germane. Don't know.
I'm waiting on the state, because they're going to have to relax some of their attendance.
Okay, time on learning, we know that state grading and retention. We know that's been controversial in the minds of some parents. Do, do we go there in our?
We're going back to normal on all of that, so.
Local graduation requirements, special education, discipline. Local graduation requirements, special education, discipline suspension, expulsion, exemptions for particular groups of students, i.e. use of masks for youngest children. We didn't opt in to that. High-risk students. This is so much family choice right now. I'm imagining that doesn't worry you that we need to call out who's a high-risk student because parents are doing that?
Well, so part of what the state guideline has said with the hybrid model, we should be identifying high-risk students and offering them a more full-time program. I don't know that you'd change, I don't know, I'd have to, we might want to look at that one just to be sure isn't somehow in any way contradictory to that.
Backcourt?
I'm sorry?
Which one is that?
This, this is one that's in DESI's July 10 news letter saying, take a look at these school committees.
Sure.
And it's a bullet right in the middle of their list. Exemptions for particular groups of students. There's no reference to exemption from what necessarily, but just exemptions. And then i.e. use of masks for youngest children, comma, high-risk students.
So that would be, you know, there will be a few kids here and there with their, their needs or disabilities that will get exempted from the mask.
Correct. Yes.
Very few, but.
Job descriptions. We've referenced who reports to work, but not job descriptions per se. Pregnant and parenting students pivoting back to remote learning or back-to-school instruction. I think, once again, we're taking DESI guidance or instruction, superintendent recommendations, school committee decision-making.
Yeah, I think it's all going to fall under the other policies that give authority to make those decisions.
Homeschooling, homebound, we looked at, remote instruction, we've looked at. The SROs, the public safety officers, anything about the MOA there that we might want to visit? I'm expecting you to have a lot at your fingertips. I apologize, Lori.
Yeah, no, I'll do it off the top of my head. I mean, we have a, we have an agreement with the police about the role of the SRO that the chief and I sign off on annually. We're in a good place with our SROs, so I guess I'll leave it to all of you if you think there's a need to review it.
I, my take on it is that we should review it simply because it's a national discussion. And then I suspect I would ask to simply reaffirm it. But be able to say that it did undergo some scrutiny.
Yeah. Yeah. I can see why you would do that. The police chief would probably appreciate it also, honestly.
Yeah. Give him some cover.
Taking most of the feedback. Yeah.
And I don't mean it in the way it might be implied there, but, you know, that it's current and we're on it. Eligibility for participation in extracurricular. I think this is something that is within the larger decisions with authorities that we have under state guidance that we, we expect to follow. Attendance versus participation in events. Don't know, is that going to require attention?
I mean, there's some gray, you know, with remote, if a student chooses 100%. Again, it's all pandemic related though. So, you know, if a choose student doesn't come to school because the family opts out of the in-person instruction, are they eligible for extracurriculars? You know, that, that's all new and different, but I don't know that we'd change a policy.
Visitors, we've already covered and that is in your roadmap. And I guess the question is, because we do have a section called Visitors to Schools in our policies.
Yes.
So should we pause and go there very quickly?
We can. I'm kind of back on that question in my head of how much do we alter the other ones, knowing some of this is temporary during the pandemic? Dorothy, I guess still kind of turning to you for that.
Well, yeah, and I would think that, you know, you would, you, you might have new rules about visitors to the schools, but that would be probably covered in how you handle your reopening plan. And I'm not sure that you need to look specifically at a policy. You would essentially say, in our reopening plan, there's a temporary alteration of our, our policy for visitors, like maybe you're not using, you're not allowing visitors in the schools or, you know, parent volunteers are not being, you're not using parent volunteers or something like that. But I would think that you outline that in your reopening plan more than changing a policy.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to change a policy. My only concern would be that somebody is waving policy A in our face and we're waving roadmap in their face as they demand access.
Well, I, I mean, I suppose you could say, well, we're temporarily suspending visitors in schools policy and it's being replaced by the roadmap.
Or even be more all-encompassing than that, that.
Oh, you know, yeah. So in this supplemental EBC policy that we've been looking at.
Yeah.
On the list of things that essentially says the old policy might not apply during the crisis, it's on that list.
So we're good to go. Thank you. Okay.
I thought we talked about it briefly last week. I was like, yeah.
Yeah, it's on that list.
Illness and contact tracing was the next one, and I think that's going to be something that comes out of the adoption of health protocols yet to be, yet, yet to be debated. We're going to see today, transportation and busing. I'm confident we've done what we need to, operations and plant maintenance. I don't think there's anything by way of policy consideration that requires us to go there. And then the last one was the, the general policy and the interim policy on COVID. So I'm, I'm content, unless you flagged anything, Dorothy, that we've, we've been diligent about pandemic.
I think you've been very diligent.
We have, if we want to use it, up to 30 minutes right now. We pushed off the, the Title IX harassment policy agenda item so that we can do the necessary homework and not try to follow an August 14 deadline that's being contested by Commonwealth, the Commonwealth. So that would leave us to a, a return visit to the, the civil rights and the gender identity. And I think it might be helpful if we want to spend a few minutes on this today to simply look at the minutes from February 27 so we can bring Sarah and Cynthia up to date. By way of background, this was advocated very forcefully by Yuval Ehrlich. And the initial, the initial response from Dr. Hunter was, is this not effectively covered in existing policy and existing authorities to manage this kind of action or activity? What I think Yuval was pushing for was, more than anything else, identification, formal identification of responsible school officials for response. So that it wasn't implied that it would be a principal matter and a superintendent matter, but rather that there would be a designated person who would have, my words now, don't be offended, anybody, more objectivity than would a principal about behavior in his or her building. He wanted to take some of this decision-making or, or response out of, out of the building and make it, make it, if you will, more visible. That's where we left it was, okay, that's worth looking at. And David Modell and I, both serving with Yuval, came around to, okay, we'll, we'll hang in there and look at this some more. Do I, do I have that kind of right, Lori?
Yes. Yep. And we looked at a couple other districts, Acton, Box, Burrows, one, and Natick. Yeah.
So that's, that's where we, where we left it. The, with the idea that perhaps Lori and Dorothy would draft a possible policy that wouldn't accommodate Yuval's every recommendation, but would speak to the idea that we would help a principal make certain that their response had a, a another link, another reporting authority, if you will, so that data could be collected and problems could be, could be monitored, I guess for lack of a better word, monitored. Now, in that that was the very end of February, nobody expects Dorothy and Lori to have spent any time on this. And I hope you didn't. I hope you didn't.
I was hoping. I'm glad you had that expectation because if you had a different one, we would have disappointed you.
So I'll quote now. And this is a new subcommittee now, but the reference to civil rights and hate speech and Dorothy and Lori's drafting at some future date reads, agreed upon terms to be included in the policy, colon, insertion of an early reference to bullying, protection of the X, protection of the explanations and definitions in the sample document. I'm in trouble with that. Creation of wording after the zero tolerance section to include annual training and designation of principal or other. So that was another piece that I neglected to say, this business of training, that that would be captured in a policy as well, that there would be, as it says here, designation of somebody, number one. And number two, that there would be some form of annual training. Is this something, Cynthia, Sarah, that you think we should look at at a future date with guidance from Dorothy and Lori? I'm not saying when because I think we have other priorities right now, but.
I do.
But the when is the hard part.
Yeah, agreed. Lori, can we try to parse these words so we understand them better? You can help me. Insertion of an early reference to bullying. February is a long time ago. One of our, one of our discussions and questions was, is this not already effectively handled in our anti-bullying? That's where we started.
That's where I started, was under harassment and bullying. I knew we were covered essentially because we used those two policies in certain situations. So I think ultimately, it's a discussion of the statement the committee wants to make as, in pulling out hate crimes as a standalone policy rather than we, you know, just letting it sit the way it does under the others.
I would, I would add that in doing a little bit of research, you know, we have our sister state associations, this was on the policy listserv. And most states actually do not have a hate speech policy. And one of the reasons is that they feel it's covered under other policies.
Would, uh, would it be worthwhile to go back to the current bullying, anti-bullying, and look at how that relates to designated school officials and what training might mean?
So can I just add a little bit more context of my memory? And you can tell me if your memory is the same, that I think part of Yuval's reason for wanting this was that he felt that bullying only covered actions against an individual, not against a group. And that was part of the sort of the philosophical difference in wanting a broader policy. So I don't know if that adds any helpful context or not, but I think that was a lot of his push back when Lori was saying, no, you know, if situations come up, we feel this is well-covered under the bullying policy.
You're correct, Dorothy. Yeah.
He, you know, he had issue over how one situation was handled and was looking for a policy to prescribe that. If the administrators are doing their jobs based on all of the other policies, that won't happen. So the, he made, his connection was that the lack of policy allowed for things to not go the way they should have. I argue, you know, I argued, argued is the right word, I guess, Cor. That if the superintendent's doing the job I'm supposed to be doing, the people around me and that work for me are going to follow the policies in the situation that pertain, and it's going to be investigated and handled, and there'll be a school response that's appropriate. He was looking for more, another way of assuring that on those particular scenarios where it's a hate speech kind of situation.
Well, I, I want to say I have not done my homework on this one to prepare for this meeting. I would be happy to keep this on the agenda for now. Cynthia is of a mind that we should continue to review this idea, to call it that.
Yeah.
With the idea that it could take the form of a policy, or it could not, or it could take the form of a revision of existing policy with potential for more clarity around responsibilities for reporting and more specificity around what kind of training might be, might be appropriate to protect people in our buildings. I'd be happy to say that we take a look at, again, at Acton, Box, Borough, at Natick, and at our own policies and focus on those two items in light of what Lori says. Our accountability is clear enough. We've got a principal, we've got a superintendent. We even have a, a person known to the federal government as, as our designee to OCR. Do we, or is that the town that has a civil rights designee?
Oh, no, we do certainly.
As well. Yeah.
Yeah, the laws are pretty, I guess that's the other last comment. I mean, the laws around all this are very, very clear that we must respond.
So, so I don't want to try to rework federal law, but I would spend some time looking at the way in which we call out responsibilities for this and what training might be, might be wise or appropriate. And come back to it.
Sure. Sure.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
The, the gender identity one, again, having not done a lot of homework, but my, my recall is that we satisfy some of the, the the dignity that kids want to have by trying to accommodate their, their desire to use certain nicknames that might or might not have a gender implication to them. That we did agree, and I'll quote here, after lengthy discussion, the subcommittee agreed to add language to a policy like Natics. It reads to Natics policy, but a policy like Natics to include the following, that parents are included in the team to discuss a request by a student for an accommodation. But that parent participation is not a must, meaning if they choose not to participate, that doesn't preclude a child from requesting an accommodation like this. And that the team will still fulfill its responsibilities absent that parent. So I think what we decided on this one was that it really didn't have to be something that required a significant policy. Am I correct, Lori?
I think that's, that was my interpretation. That was my opinion. I guess I'll leave it at that. I think there was some discussion among the subcommittee at the time. Again, similar to the hate speech of just wanting a clear statement to those students that there was a district that supported them.
Yeah. In fact, your words are, are words that were used in, in that February meeting. It's a statement. So we can call it a policy, but it was also something that had some, if you will, symbolic or school culture significance.
Right, because gender identity is included in all, you know, how many policies, Dorothy, is gender identity one of the subgroups of protected?
Right, exactly.
Protected groups that clearly, very clearly protect them, so.
Anything here adds no protections that aren't already in place.
Correct, correct.
All right. So I would, I would ask that we treat this one as we did the civil rights and hate speech idea, and that is to, in fact, do, do some homework on this and look at whether, in fact, we think this is how a policy handbook should be used.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea for a new subcommittee to.
That's a big question for us, you know. My heart might say one thing and my, my mind might say something very different.
Yep, I would agree.
So I'm going to propose that unless other people have dug in deeper on this and have some thoughts and opinions or recommendations that we get back to this, we're not as, as COVID over focused.
Yeah, one, one thing to note is on the gender identity name usage, since there's that distinguishment between the use of a legal name and versus like, I might want to consider saying a preferred name instead of a nickname, just to not to, to legit, you know, to, to acknowledge its legitimacy to the person using the name.
Got it.
Yeah.
Also, we don't know the origins of the term nickname.
We don't.
Yeah, it's, yeah, preferred is much better.
Yeah, prefer, yeah, that's a good call.
Very good. Thank you, Sarah.
Do we have any new business today?
I keep forgetting to bring this up. But especially in light of COVID, I see that, and I don't really see it statewide in Dorothy, correctly, if I'm wrong, I don't really see another school community policies, but a policy around providing feminine care products in bathrooms at middle and high schools. So particularly now, we don't want to have, students have to go to the nurse for many reasons. And I was just thinking this might be an opportunity, but it's on the agenda, but just something. I know there's lots of programs out there to support this in schools.
Yeah, I do, I do know that Lynn recently passed a policy about feminine hygiene products. And that's, I know it was discussed in one of the districts. I don't know the outcome of the discussion. Also, also a, an urban district.
Yep.
But, so I don't know how widespread it is. I know there's a couple, at least a couple examples, but I.
And Lori, I'm wondering if the nurses would welcome that or would like things to stay the way they are?
Lori, I think it's a good question. I've, I've actually been in support of it ever since I read about the, the Brookline effort to do this.
Yeah, I guess I've talked with anyone, so I wouldn't speak for them, but I certainly see the positive intent and impact.
Strikes me, it makes sense on a lot of levels.
Yeah.
So if you could check with your, your health, health folks so that they've been consulted. And on our homework, we can look at Lynn and we can call that up through your site, Dorothy, correct?
Uh, no, they're not online, but I can get it to you.
If you'd be so kind, okay.
Sorry, Lori, I just, I thought it would make sense, so I'm not trying to make work, but because I, you know, I'd be particularly reluctant to go to the nurse for many reasons.
Yeah, this year especially, yeah.
Yeah. I'm just sort of, you know, if a student is already having issues.
And the truth is, this year we don't want them in there, so, yeah.
It's not the greatest time for, to call mom and.
Yeah, yep. Okay.
You probably have authority to do this on your own, Lori, but I think it'd be smart to policy it.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I mean, I could just do that and then we could put the policy in place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we were to straw poll right here, were there to be a policy that said these were available in student bathrooms in a dispenser provided by the school district? Would we be talking about high school or middle and high school, do you think?
I'd say both.
Say both.
And I would certainly be in support of that. And I think it would happen with very little fanfare and quickly become something that's simply normal and appropriate.
Yep. Yep.
Anything else for, for agenda for next time or homework for us? How fast do we want to keep moving? We have nothing that is urgent in terms of the COVID-related policy work that we have.
I just think we should try to keep up with COVID-related policies. And then I think we should try to, where are we? Almost the middle of August. Maybe try to meet in September? Or were you thinking of something sooner or later?
No, that's fine.
I mean, do we have any other business that we want to get in front of the full committee that's specific to COVID?
I don't think we do. Am I missing something? I think we're okay.
I think we're in really good shape actually there.
Because Sarah did have a few suggestions for tweaks, policies.
True, yeah.
Bring those forward.
Yeah, we have to, we have to look deeper into those.
Yeah, we've got to, we've got to tighten them up and be precise.
Okay.
Yeah. But we know what they are.
All right. So we don't need to bring anything to the full committee outside of the ones that we're voting on next week.
Correct. No, I think we're in good shape with those four. When there is a, a post Concord Town meeting school committee that's reformed, the then-chair people have the responsibility of naming people to this committee and naming the chairperson of this committee.
Correct.
Of this subcommittee, so.
Should we let that unfold and?
I'm sorry?
Should we let that unfold?
Sure, unless you have a great yearning for it, in which case we'll support your candidacy right now.
So, but potentially we have a new, possibly a new committee.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, it'd be good to see if we could have one of the, we're going to have a couple of people with less background than we, perhaps get one of them up to speed by sitting in this, on this group. So we'll see.
Okay.
Anything else for today?
Got six whole minutes extra.
Yeah, wow.
I had two principals text me wanting a phone call, so I'll take it.
You get, you get your six minutes, Lori.
I'll take it.
Dorothy, thank you. I'm glad the commute was so easy today. Although, although the refreshments were a little more meager than, than usual. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
On the second?
Second.
And those in favor, roll a call. Cynthia Rainey?
Aye.
Sarah Wilson?
Aye.
Court Booth, aye. And thank you very much all. Take good care, be safe.
I'm safe too. Boarding and hope for the best.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.